Okay, let's call this meeting to order at seven oh five. Planning Commission meeting. Uh, start off with any adjustments to the agenda?
I don't know.
No, just at the end. We don't have another, but there's something to for us to discuss.
We can talk about that at the end. So let's introduce ourselves. I'm Ken Carter. I'm a vice chair. I'll be leading this tonight of guests.
Nikki crib.
Tammy Brennan.
Can someone get a shine up sheet started maybe?
Well, I'm, I think I got them.
We got them all. Sean and Jen, Linda.
Maybe not spelt right. Okay, what's? Penny? Perfect.
Is your person signed in yet that wants to be heard?
I know you too.
Okay. Do uh, is he gonna be doing some talking, do you think, or? Okay, do you wanna present what you've got planned, or do?
I know, I think, I think Mike.
Uh, we've got, I think we got copies of all that, I think. Um, but if you guys can come up and sit here and if you push the center button on that microphone.
Was Mike supposed to be here?
A Christian is one of his associates.
Cause I thought they called to find out when.
You think you can, do you think you need him for, cause we can, we can do some of this other business if you wanna go a couple more minutes or?
I mean, if you think you, we need to have him here, you can, you can wait, but I mean, I it seems pretty straightforward.
Okay, yeah, we haven't, I haven't even really looked at the last, it was here last time, we just took a quick look at it, so I, we don't really, we, we kinda usually have you or someone tell us what your plan is and we kinda go along with the maps and just see what's the plan is and.
So our, I'll just start, um, we're putting a driveway in, shared driveway.
Okay, um.
South of the barn, my parents subdivision.
Yep.
And that driveway is gonna be twenty-six foot wide commercial driveway. And then we subdivide it off two acres next to my parents', two acres, which is right next to the barn, and we plan on building a house on the other side of the barn towards Christmas trees.
Okay, so that's, that's gonna be lot three.
It is lot.
Well, do you wanna take a look at this? So, this is the main copy, but here's, this is the lot three.
Lot three, yes.
Okay, and then this is already.
Yeah, that's already, that's already existing. That's lot one, that's Larry Freger's.
And that was already been.
And the driveway is going in where that black line is, it's gonna be a shared driveway.
So that's this, is that?
And then Larry's closing off his driveway.
Is this, is that uh? This the new driver or is that?
No, that's the old driveway. The new driveway, the new driveway is coming in right here.
Okay.
It says proposed access, that red line.
Oh yeah, okay, so it's between those two red lines.
And so the existing driveway is.
Uh, gonna be gone.
Yeah, you have to close in the existing driveway and plant a hedge.
Okay. And so your, your dad, is your dad or?
Yep, that's my dad.
So he's, or that lot's already been subdivided?
Yep.
Okay. That was the one question I kinda had was.
That was done a long time ago.
This, that keeps us a minor, which is nice, um. So you're basically just creating this law and?
Yep, and this, and the rest of this in, uh, is in land use.
Okay.
And you'll enter the tree farm itself through that driveway.
Yes, south, um, south, south of the barn, yes.
Behind the barn shop.
Yeah.
Will there be other accesses off of that into those trees or?
Well, there's.
Whatever there is already.
Yeah, there's already.
Okay, that won't, that won't really interfere with your, your law.
And you can attach to the public water?
Yes.
Okay.
We have a, a right of way from Larry Freger in our deed to attach to the water, which is at the corner of this parking lot. And we're gonna run it off to the, off the sides of the barn here, and then power and water is all buried. Perdeed, so we can't have any, we can't do, um, power poles, so everything's be buried.
That's your, right, I mean, that's, you're, someone wants, didn't want to have.
Yeah, that's in the deed. My dad had in the deed, and we can't do like a solar farm or windmills or any of that nature. I mean, we could do like a solar panel next to our, like, like a little tour, you know, next to our building or whatever, and that doesn't. That's fine, but we can't do like a solar feed, you know?
Alright.
The rain and all that stuff.
What's going on in the new barn there? What happens there?
Everything happens there. So that, they have the new barns thirty-two by sixty and twelve foot high ceilings, and I make my reeds in there, um. I have my woodworking shop in there. Currently, we have probably fifteen hundred linear feet of lumber in there that we cut ourselves from the trees, so we cleared all this land here.
Yeah.
And we have our own sawmill and we saw it over lumber and we're building, we're gonna build a new house. Hopefully that lumber is, uh, will, will be far as.
Sounds good. Coming in, oh, here he is. We'll just let him join and we can see if he has anything he wants.
Barn and Jarvis.
Do you guys got any questions or anything?
Yeah, do you wanna see the map or anything?
No, maybe for subdivision, wondered how the house.
Hello, Christian, are you there?
Muted maybe? He's muted.
He is muted, yeah. Your, uh, mic is muted if you can hear us.
He needs to star six to pick himself up near the.
Hi, Christian. Okay. Here we go. Now we have Christian.
Hello.
Hey, I, I can see ya and I can hear ya, but you can't hear me.
Yeah, is there something, uh, are you on a phone right now?
Uh, this, she's, I'm on my phone right now over the call, but I am on my desktop, uh, so my desktop doesn't have speakers, a mic.
Yeah, if she, if she has a monitor, it does have, yes, I'm muted, my, my, she's on herself on, that's the star says.
Yeah, I think it's a technical thing, but this works, okay, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
So we just heard, um, Derek, Derek's, Derek kinda presented what their plan to do there. Um, I don't know if you had any, but anything else you wanted to just talk about, or did you wanna run through it at all?
I mean, if there's any technical questions that you have, um, other than, you know, what's readily apparent on the plan and, 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 you know, what, I mean, Derek have it already presented, um. Feel free to ask, you know, we've, we've sent in a wastewater application to the state, we've sent in the V-Trans applications to the state, so those are pending approval.
Good.
Um, and this, this lot is, you know, a lot that we're doing interior to the, the tree farm, as you probably know, and you know, it's behind his father's lot, and they're seeking access through an easement through his father's lot, so they'll, you know, need to get that sorted out when they, when they do the deed transfers, um, other than that, it's pretty straightforward, cut and dry. Two acre lot, um, they will have to update the current use plan as well. But other than that, if you have any technical questions, feel free.
That's already been marked out, that, the new lot?
Yeah, the pens have already been set, yes, sir.
Okay. You ladies have any, uh?
No, it looks. Pretty straight.
Nice, nice job.
With.
Well, yeah, well, I mean, we'll have to say something about the pending, uh, locations there, but.
Well, we have to do a final hearing then, just for, see the wastewater or?
I think we could approve this as a final and as long as those are
Okay.
Those are approved, I mean, I, that's why.
Cause I warned it so that it could be either.
Yeah. Probably want it to be final, it could be. Do I hear any?
Make a motion to accept pending wastewater permit and updated current use program, although that doesn't really matter to us.
Yeah, that's, the current uses, that's all done.
I think it's not.
We did all that already.
Yeah, I think you said.
The town wanted to make sure they had their taxes on it. That was done.
It's the state, transfer tax, that's all state.
No, property tax on it. The, the town made sure that was done right off the, like, the property tax.
For the two acres?
Yep. Cause now it's subdivided to acres, it's not farm acres.
Yeah, you had to pull that out of current use.
Yeah, so no, trust me, the day that happened, I got a letter in the mail asking for money.
So yeah, we need, so we'll we need, we'll need the road access permit too and the waste.
Road access permit, but you must have gotten that from the state.
Yeah, it's pending right now.
It's that's.
There's no reason it's not gonna go through, I mean, it's the well, I, it meets all the specs. And the, and the.
What Pierce at V-Trans asked for specifically, so he better approve it.
What did he say?
We did exactly as the state said.
And did the state require you to close the other driveway?
Yes. So.
So I guess, yeah, make a motion to accept pending the wastewater permit come through and the state road access permit come through.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of approving this, uh, so minor subdivision pending those two permits, wastewater and road access, say aye.
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 Aye. Any one opposed? I passed, zero.
So we just need the Mylar when those come through.
I have it in the car.
Oh, you do?
Mylar? Yeah, I was like, I don't know what I'm supposed to give this.
Can you sign that without?
I think we gotta wait.
We gotta wait for the permit.
See the wastewater permit and the road access permit come through, and then we can happy to fill sign or do you try to sign it, Ken, cause you were at the meeting?
I'm happy to sign it, but like I said, we should probably wait for those to make sure.
Perfect. That's done.
I think we're all set with you, Christian.
Okay, yeah, that seemed to go pretty quick, um, and smooth, so that's, that's good. I'm just looking, we did have the Mylar done, I just don't know if we sent.
You did, I have, yep, I have two paper ones and a Mylar one.
Okay, so you can give them the Mylar if they're ready to move that, and then I can just go with the recording.
Okay.
Is there any idea when that school will come in?
Is there any, what, hold on, Christian?
Does he have any idea like in the next week, ten, month, or?
Those permits should be, we were hoping by end of month, right? The wastewater and the driveway.
They've been planning for almost two weeks now, um, so hopefully he'll get that wrapped up by the end of the month.
And then wastewater is usually thirty days-ish and we sent it in two weeks ago?
We have that one in in checking, they, they had it in last, at the end of last month, so by the end of, about the same time.
Okay, so a couple of weeks.
Should have.
Okay.
Just so you guys know that.
Yeah, perfect.
You're gonna, I guess it'll come to you or will it come to the town, you know, or? Okay. Okay, so let us know or.
I'll know when you bring it in and I'll call Ken.
Yeah. But yeah.
When do you start buildings? When all these permits? You're all ready though.
We, yeah, we have everyone lined up, everything's kind of ninety-three percent ready to go, so.
Trying to be in it before winter.
We're trying to be in it before tree season, we can get moved before we start.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
You won't be in it till January, yeah.
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 Hey, won't be the first time.
That is very true.
All right, thanks for.
Sounds lovely.
Very much.
You're welcome.
Have a good day.
Good luck with your.
Have a good day, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
See you, enjoy.
Yeah, better here, that's about to go to.
I think that's for typical, that's for salad.
Compliance?
Yeah.
Yep.
Is it an application?
Yeah.
Checking there.
For sixty-five?
Yeah.
All right, I'll take it.
We've all seen that.
Thank you.
Everyone, good night.
So now it's time for the public comment, and I see a member of the public here, so.
I'm here because the board asked me to be the, uh, person to work on the designation of the wage center.
Okay.
And that is with the planning commission and regional planning.
We're part of the new town plan, or is it? Okay.
So we're working on.
We're sort of in the very early stages, yeah, we will be for sure. We're hoping to have it by next town meeting.
Early stage too, just getting my feet wet and.
Yeah.
Finding out what I'm supposed to do and what I can do.
So how does that interact with the planning commission?
Uh, just, it becomes part of the town plan.
Oh, it does, okay. And how long was the designation good for? Like, how old is it?
This one, how old? I don't know.
Like, I'm wondering why it's.
Because it was when, I remember.
Oh, I remember, we back when Nancy.
Fifteen years, yeah, twenty years ago.
So every fifteen years or twenty years?
I think it's ten.
Ten.
Okay.
I will look into that and I will let you.
It's interesting to, to know.
You don't happen to have the binder of the historical.
You gave me the book on the designation of the wage center, the green.
Was that historical center though?
So what happened was, when Nancy did it, she had historical center, and then there was really some, yep, and then Bill uh, just put an old on your.
Historical.
No, village.
So because Alice was in here looking for a binder that had all the historical information, and we're searching, searching, I'm, I'm like, are you sure Linda McCall doesn't have a copy? Because she has all the historical. It was me.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Yeah, she was looking for it and I was thinking. And they kept saying it was a white one. And we're looking for a white one, we find it on top of the cupboard. Good to know.
Yeah. And very long show you like that.
Okay.
You were, you picture yourself coming to a lot of our meetings, yes?
And when?
We can probably try to let you know when we're actually gonna be talking about. Um, maybe.
Cause that will be on the warning, correct?
What's that?
Like, if somebody comes to talk, or we're planning on talking about the town plan, it would be on our agenda.
It should be on the agenda, sure, yeah, yeah. Um.
And I gotta get connected with, um, Northwest Regional, so provide people to.
Emily Glock.
Yeah, yeah, we're hoping to get a grant through them and probably have one of them help us.
I think it's Emily Clark, she came. That looks like.
Emily, yeah.
Yep.
Um.
Yep.
That was, that was very helpful. What was their meeting? Are you one of the members now? Okay.
Is Bill still the other?
Yeah. Bill's the other, he's also the chair for that group.
Well, good, glad you two are on that. Um. Did you anything you wanted to say specifically, or?
Beware.
Then while you.
Or any, do you see, foresee any changes?
Yeah, it's, it's timely.
Yeah.
Uh huh. Are you thinking there's gonna be any changes, or?
I think, yes. Cause I think the desire from the state standpoint is to expand it in which you had village water.
Hmm.
It's beyond what is now.
Village. So will it be separate then, historic village? Not again?
I don't know.
Because you wouldn't necessarily have to have historic all the way down to the end of the water.
Yeah. But out on Sunset View, that would be new.
True. So it wouldn't be historic.
I think with having a village center, what I would love to see is a walking community, so that the people on the south end of the street have sidewalks down here, and they don't have to walk in the road in the wintertime.
Or even in the spring and summer time when the cars.
I know. It is.
Yep. Like kind of like a four-way stop, like the intersection, slow down.
Yeah, right.
For a little bit.
That'd be great.
I mean, it comes through your name and pass rate in the.
I know, we know.
Yeah.
So, to, by expanding the village center, does that, that, I'm assuming changes lot sizes and housing and?
Yeah, it would change it from high density, well, not.
No, no.
Not necessarily.
Have to change the zoning rigs out there.
Because village is quarter acre. High density is an acre.
Yeah.
So if you include more in the village, would that by definition become quarter acre zoning?
If we could make it that way, or we could potentially leave it as it is, or?
So we'd have to have village and then something else, like two, two classes?
A lot of lot sizes. You know, outside of what's never that with the center already, quarter acre. Like a funny avenue and stuff.
Right, up there in the village, that's all.
Me, I'm.
You're.
Yeah, your historic or your high density?
I think one of that's.
They're, they're.
I don't know. You're pretty.
Cause you're on village water.
Yeah.
And.
But so was Larry out there.
The state would love it to be a quarter acre on village water.
Yeah.
Cause they're trying to pack it in.
They wanna get more houses.
As long as it can accommodate the sewage, you know, it's permanent, even though.
But because of the water.
Right.
Usually it can.
Yes. And the soils are good for.
And the soil is good.
For very quality.
Yeah.
Okay.
But yeah, maybe the village and historic would have to separate again. Cause you wouldn't include all that.
Heather, Heather never checked in tonight, or Heather, Heather never checked in?
In historic, like you're not supposed to change this and that and this, if it's historic, right? You have to maintain.
The historic registry, you have restrictions.
And we don't have.
But even historic districts, are you sure?
Yes, we don't.
I think there's, there's some.
That on still or?
By definition of.
Yes.
Creating a historic district.
It's a very continued conversation, she should be online.
Oh. You should have flagged this. Well, I'm like, so. I, I'm sure she was grabbing me. Not getting Linda.
It's got a little period, pretty muddy.
Watch. Like one, like walk.
But yeah, I think that would have to, yeah. Have to be separate. Village historic and then village. Would have to be two different things, I think. I got it.
I appreciate it.
All you people out there getting that?
Nobody ever, may ever watch it, but.
We still gotta pay the rules, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
That was her whole life, that was my title, Taylor. She always would crack.
Moving on, I guess there are no March eighteenth minutes yet, so.
Nope, there are nine.
Till next meeting.
Right. Zoning administrator is in Florida. But, um, he has questions about, he left us a note. And then I spoke to him, so there's more notes. So this is about Carl Stone's little thing down there with the cars. Okay, so when he started the permit, there was an issue with him being maybe too close to the stream with possible
not office.
Substation, yeah, substation, substances bleaching. Okay, so he wanted us to look at, can you speak with the planning commission about sections four point four, conditional use, four point five variance and five point five existing small lots and probably the junkyard one too? Those things. Where am I?
Was it four point four?
Yeah, four point four, four point five.
And five point five. I didn't bring mine.
Let's see, I think I've dropped, you can share, if I can find it. This is not, I've got so much.
No, what's the specific?
I thought that Brenda had not approved that from there, and they went somewhere else and didn't get approved.
No, she was working with, it's not Brenda, it's A and R, like, um, the state.
Oh.
Who is, was going to do something about it, but then the flood happened over yonder, and that kinda got pushed and pushed and pushed, so.
Kind of did it anyway?
Yeah. Brenda said she wasn't gonna handle it since the state. Or approval because of the church.
Sure, we are here. I've got so many.
Into the water, so she was standing away from it until the state came back on the shore.
And, and Brian's been talking with the state and will continue to.
But it sounds like they haven't got back to him, whatever happened to that.
Well.
Was that technically now, like?
Four point four.
The, what are you doing?
There's no building, it's cause he wants to move building.
Well, it's technically a junkyard.
It's, yeah.
You know, and so. He was preparing, he had to put the building, where is the junkyard one? Junkyards, contractors yard. Is that the same thing? I don't think so.
Salvage yard.
Salvage yards.
Twenty point eleven.
Six and elevens. Okay. So. May be permitted, new or expanded commercial salvage yards may be permitted within designated zoning districts subject to conditional use review and site plan review under Article four and the following specific use standards.
Lot size ten acres, is he up ten acres then?
Uh-uh. No, it's a small lot. No more than, see, that's why conditional use would change it, no more than five acres shall be used for the salvage yard use. Setbacks, at least a hundred feet, more property lines, roadways, surface waters and wetlands.
That was the piece that.
Um, screened year round from public view. You know, landscaping, fencing, and other forms of screening. Exterior lighting should be a minimum required for security and safe operation. Storage, onsite storage material should not adversely affect surface, ground, or drinking water supplies in the vicinity. So if we're calling this a junkyard, then no. But she's, um, she is calling it dr- he want, he, his intent is to have it be dry storage, which would mean tires, um, what do you say?
Just cover the building or.
It would be a building, so you wouldn't see any of the whatsoever in there.
Seems like a lot better than.
Right, and then in that case, it wouldn't be a salvage yard, correct, if it's inside a building? Um, so he's willing to move it closer to the road, which it's pretty close to the road, um, and move it closer to Bakersfield, so it's further away from that little stream. Um.
But if it's gonna be dry storage.
Willing to, and he's willing to build up the property and taper it away from the brook. And put a one-foot concrete wall up to sort of be a one-foot concrete wall around, he's wanting to put a lagoon in it, so any solutions wouldn't leach out of the building.
So it's not a dry building then?
It isn't.
Cars will be okay.
It's salvage yard, they're putting building, because it's wrecked cars, they hadn't done it lately now, I think, five weeks.
So it doesn't.
Why we said no the first time.
But he's saying his intent is dry goods storage, but.
So he doesn't need all of that.
Concrete floor.
When he started out with, he's putting a floating slot, right, and that.
I know.
For, and, and the problem is, is it is the concern with the leach. So, I mean, that's why Brenda put it back to the state, let the state make the decision before she does. And of course, she's no longer zoning board, so, and she can't really take stuff and be that.
So four point four.
Started piling up the cars there without really.
They actually take the cars on the lot per se and Mitchell, before the expiration of the building time research. Because also, if I remember, the building was gonna be two or three stories tall.
It's gonna be thirty feet, but not. No, but yeah, but not more than. It would be thirty.
But that's the question, can you come in and?
So TV, let's see.
All I'm saying is, all I'm saying is with the the things that, the reason it was put on pause with the town of Bakersfield was it had to go through the state. And the EPA, they had to, they had to agree with this. Now, in the interim, what they did was initially, all we asked for was a fence, until he came back with the building.
No, he wanted the building first.
Well, the the fence enabled him to put the cars, I'll put it that way per se, but they're only supposed to be there for a short amount of time while insurance companies. Come and take pictures or whatever, and then they're supposed to go offsite, or that's how it was presented to us.
Well, I had I had noticed that some cars don't stay there that long, there's one of, one like mine, and I was like, oh, maybe. Now I've gone on the next time I went by, so I do think cars are moving in and out of there, I mean, probably some of them have been there.
So have the EPA and the state done that bit yet, is that what?
Talking to Brian Weston, that doesn't mean that.
Figure out, like, obviously, it would have to be come under conditional use. And there'd have to be a variance, cause it's not ten acres, it's an existing small lot. He wanted to remind us that there was a factory there that turned maple syrup into flavored syrups at one time. Um, so. Commercial property, not that we have any really commercial property.
You know, it's.
Designated.
Believe it's designated as commercial.
I don't think we have any desert, commercial designations.
Up there or if anywhere.
Anywhere.
It it's it's a difference when you're making food grade products, that oil and gas leaking and antifreeze and.
Definitely, definitely.
Total difference.
That's definitely true. Needs to wait for the state and EPA to come back, because. I've, I mean, just just from a personal perspective, you know, it's. A business, we benefit from having a business there. We all drive cars that get wrecked, you know, so it's like, I don't wanna be not in my backyard kind of attitude, I wanna see them. Taken care of properly.
Right. Yeah, he's running out of room, he's running out of room with the garages or.
Yeah, right, right.
And 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 it's.
So if it's contained, then it takes it out of the junkyard.
Yeah.
Category, so then it would be.
Still a salvage yard anyway, but if the cars are going.
Right, but if they're, if they're contained under, if they're contained with concrete.
That's the EPA is gonna, eh eh, this is me.
He's checking with us as zoning bylaws. We can do it, I think. You know, so that he can, when he talks to the state. Then he can. I don't know.
I think, I think the conversation he has with the state is what would it take for the EPA and the state to accept the salvage yard that close to wetland slash? You know, cause that's more rolling downhill. Going somewhere.
An applicant may apply for a variance from the provisions of these regulations. From the Board of Adjustment for any structure in accord, um, in accordance. With blah, 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 the Board of Adjustment may grant variance only if all of the five facts listed below are found. And the findings are specified in its written decision. There are unique physical circumstances or conditions, including irregularity, narrowness, shallowness of lot size or shape. Or exceptional, topographical or other physical conditions. And that unnecessary hardship is due to these conditions and not the circumstances or conditions generally created by the provisions of the bylaw. And the neighborhood or district in which the property is located. Because of these physical circumstances or conditions, there's no possibility that the property can be developed in strict conformance with the provisions of the bylaw. Is what, how big is that lot?
Uh, I wouldn't say it's a quarter acre. Fenced off, I don't know how big that lot is. How far it goes left, right?
And the authorization of a variance is therefore necessary, able reasonable use.
For the horse. He should have been sure, he could have done it before he, i.e. bought either bought the property. Or decided to turn it into a salvage yard, cause you know what, you could build a house on that land.
Yeah, you could.
Put a house on Atlanta, it's not like that lane's unusable. The problem is.
If you can get a well, and I don't know if you can put a house on that land, if it's only a quarter acre, you gotta get a well and a leach field.
I don't know.
A hundred, hundred and fifty feet minimum. If it's a mound, three hundred feet minimum.
But I don't know the size of the lot. What I'm, and and all I'm saying is that, you know, I'm not saying anything negative, I'm just saying that. The due diligence and the homework wasn't done. Before, uh, if eh eh, and it may have been too good of a deal to turn it down, I don't know, but. He can wind up with a piece of property he can't use for what he wants to use it for. Now, if he takes the cars off there. And he's dry stores.
And it's dry storage.
Yeah, you you know, you you're putting, you but you start putting cars that are damaged and you can, you know, um, that's right where the concern comes. And and frankly, if you think about it, I mean, it's like any other. Automotive shop, we have several in the town, right, right, where they have to deal with that, um. Because of, uh, you know, even just oil changes and and somebody's got drip, uh, drippy, leaky.
I'm assuming that he is well aware of what that is, yeah, he has, he has a shop, he must know.
But what's the limit of cars before it's considered a salvage yard? How many?
In the definitions there, salvage yard is. There's one more item in that. Description of a salvage yard, it says the, you know, the. All salvage yards are subject to review and approval by the Bakersfield Select Board. Under separate state statute, blah, 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 so. And the select board might be able to have the final.
But I think he's trying to avoid it being called a salvage yard.
But he can't call it dry goods storage if he's got cars in there.
I'm trying to avoid my house, call it homestead and instead of a farm, so I can call it ag and not pay taxes, but nobody seems to do that once that, right?
You have to earn fifty percent of your income from that.
Say a salvage yard is not. Is eh eh, in the definition, it says a salvage yard. Also means any outdoor area used for operation of an automobile graveyard. It does not mean a garage where wrecked or disabled motor vehicles are stored for less than ninety days for inspection or repairs.
So if it's inside, it's not called a salvage yard.
Then it's good.
Well, no, it's saying repairs, you're not repairing that, they're wrecked.
There's no garage.
The building would be. Like a garage, right? It would be inside. While the cars are inside.
There'll have to be a big building, he's probably got twenty cars there right now.
I know, at least, yeah.
I think. We we could discuss this all night, but until the state comes back with specific questions that they need us to answer. I feel you've got to wait for them to make a decision.
Vermont Department of Envi- Environmental Conservation, something it cut off, uh, says. Three unregistered, uninspected cars, do you need a salvage permit?
Okay. Right.
Looking for it.
There's more than three there, know that.
Vermont Department Environmental, did you know you need a salvage yard permit if you have more than three unregistered or uninspected cars in your property? Cars that sit around, people take apart for scrap metal can leak hazardous substances, is the land or the water. Dex salvage yard program, make sure these cars are managed carefully, so this is literally on their Facebook page. Three cars. And they are.
There was, yeah.
Three cars sitting on their property.
Well, we don't know if they're registered. I mean, you know, there's. The bottom line is. It's gotta come back from the state and the EPA before we.
Well, see, the bottom line is, are there gonna be cars in it or is it dry storage?
Well.
Because that makes a difference to the state.
Terminat two days after it opens.
But that's the thing, John, but you can't. You can't make a decision like that.
So if we're gonna go send people down to inspect it every three weeks or three days or once a week to make sure there's not cars in there that are wrecked? Or are we gonna be recompensated for the time?
I don't think we'll go down and inspect it period, once it's in place.
We could also argue you don't need a three story building if it's gonna be dry storage.
Yeah, dry storage for a couple tires doesn't require a thirty foot tall building.
Well, maybe equipment, right, cause equipment, right. Right, 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 right.
So I just say, we that the, we know what he intends, he he put out his intentional use, intended it to be a salvage. Or a place to store wrecked vehicles until.
And tires.
Companies can come and look and such. Uh, you know, wait for the EPA to come back, and you know what, the EPA may say it's not a problem if he does this, this, this and this. But if we step in and say, you can do it because we've we've spun this box a little bit and tilted it, so it looks a little different. And the EPA comes in because someone complains, we're just as liable as they.
Yeah.
And God help us, the town can't afford to have any kind of uh, actions against them.
Well, they can't.
So.
So what is, what is Brian asking us to do?
Brian wanted us to look at these ordinances, these bylaws. Well, this is what he said, okay? Um, can you speak with the planning commission about sections four point four, conditional use, four point five variance, five point five existing small lots? For the building that Stones wants to put up, and he said he should probably look under junkyards too. I haven't been able to get regional planning or the state to call me back to set up a meeting. Stones are willing to move the building around a little to get it to fit.
I.
And then he said.
Position would be that we shouldn't do anything until the state comes back and says that it's open, I mean EPA.
And when it comes to select board, that's gonna be my stance as well, since we are the ultimate say.
Give the ultimate say.
Yeah, I'm not willing to stamp that building until the state comes back and the EPA and says it's good to go, cause we can't.
We'll see, the only reason would come to you is if it remains a salvage yard.
If they're putting wrecked cars in there, it's a salvage yard, I don't care if it's in the building, on top of the building, they build a cave underneath it, somehow they make them invisible.
Yeah, but is that by definition, a salvage yard?
Three cars.
But that's outside, John.
That's any three cars it says on the property.
Any place, so our definition of salvage yard is any place of outdoor storage.
Outdoor.
Or deposit for storing, or deposit, what does that mean, outdoor storage or deposit for storing, keeping, processing, buying or selling junk or the scrap metal processing facility? Salvage yard may also mean any outdoor area used for operation of an automobile graveyard.
Page do you want?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six.
Just as on the property, doesn't say it's.
Yeah, a place of outdoor storage.
There's outdoor storage.
Yeah, I'm just reading with the Vermont. Salvage yard rule.
And this is outdoor area twice.
Yep.
Used for operation of an automobile graveyard does not mean a garage where wrecked or disabled motor vehicles are stored. For less than ninety days for inspection.
And by that definition. If the state and the EPA say it's fine, then we would not be able to deny it because it fits within our.
Cause it wouldn't be a salvage yard.
Would be fine with that.
It would be inside and it.
Yeah.
You know, nobody's clocking him in ninety days, but. Most likely, things gonna have to move, you're limited to that space.
Yeah.
So I guess the answer to Brian is.
The state.
The state and EPA.
Wait for the EPA and the state. Deck.
What's stack?
I don't know, I keep seeing.
Conservation.
Conservation, probably Department of Environmental Conservation, that's good.
Oh, yeah, the DUC, Department of Environmental Conservation. The deck. I didn't recognize it when you said deck. Okay, so. You wanna try for the Monday? May.
For first Monday, talk again?
Do you wanna?
Like to, I think, but you know, a lot of times it's just one, depends on bill.
First Monday of the month is the sixth.
Let's push into that then, so now that work everyone here?
Yep.
Well, you mentioned earlier that was the Brian question.
That was the Brian question, yep. Yep, that was the one.
And I would think. If. Stones is motivated for this to happen. They could also contact the EPA and the state.
Right. Well, yeah, it seems like right now he's. Stars there, so he's he's not really any. Not really feeling any pressure. More approved.
It's getting a ton of money for that.
I could live on that.
Anybody wanna?
I'm making a motion that, oh, we've got my meeting sorted, yeah, I make a motion that we adjourn at seven.
I second it.
Then fifty-one?
Yes.
All favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay. Wasn't our fastest meeting ever, but.
Not bad.